All right. Good evening, everyone. We have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report. So with that, I will close the meeting, uh, close the special meeting at 6:01 PM. And that takes us over to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 26, 2025. The time is 6:01 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting video replays will be replayed on Friday, February 28th at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, March 4th at 9:00 AM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24. No individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I would be moving into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robles.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
All right, next up is our land acknowledgement. Assisting will be Councilmember Robles.
We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plain Meowaks, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since the time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federalized recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endures because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors and tribal members and leaders.
All right, the next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. And if our Councilmember colleague here, Rod Brewer, would you please assist this evening?
Thank you, Mayor.
Everybody hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty, justice, and moral.
Next up is our Moment of Silence. Please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our Approval of the Agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3, the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda. That'll advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, and that one item being Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing March 2nd through 8th, 2025, as Women in Construction Week.
Excellent. I'd like to call up Michelle Nelson and representatives of the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento, Chapter 63, and members of the City Public Works Department. And Councilmember Suen will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Thank you, Michelle, for being here. Good evening. So it's our honor to recognize that Women in Construction Week for March 2nd through March 8th, 2025, that whereas the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento, Chapter 63, has distinguished itself for 60 years as the voice of women in construction in the Sacramento region, as well as Northern California, and whereas work done by the Sacramento Chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction has benefited the region through community development and educational programs, and whereas the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, whereas the construction community represented by the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades, careers, and a positive vision of the future, and whereas Sacramento Chapter of the NAWIC has sought to achieve successful results of the Sacramento region and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit and other organizations. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento, Chapter 63, and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 2nd through March 8th, 2025, as Women in Construction Week, and encourage all residents to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. Congratulations, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very, very much. I will just say a short statement. We would like to express our gratitude for this honor. This is a testament to the strength, dedication, and the resilience of women in construction industry. We look forward to continuing to build and inspire women. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll be down there with the proclamation.
Congratulations, everyone.
Nice team. How are you?
Oh, yeah. Good day.
Okay, so this way.
Okay. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you. Thank you so much. And you guys keep it real.
Yes, exactly.
All right, next up is our Public Comment. I will go ahead and open up the Public Comment opportunity. We have two speakers signed up. Jamal Nayer, followed by Steve Lee. Jamal?
I'll make this brief, Madam Mayor.
Please, yeah, please come up here and then use the microphone.
I was here in October 23 addressing the tenant problem we have on Southern Way. And I'd like to thank you and the code enforcement for taking care of that problem. I thought it had already been addressed. And now, unfortunately, it came up again. And the same behavior that I was complaining about has happened again. This was Saturday night. This went on from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM in the morning. Two officers came out, two Elk Grove Police Officers came out, and one of them apologized to this young lady here who was making all this noise, that he didn't know who the, uh, the neighbor who was calling this in. I'm trying to go to sleep. This is at 1:21 in the morning. And two officers came out there, and you can see his, uh, the garage door is open, and they're just talking out loud all night. And this is the fourth time this year it's happened. For three this month and one last month. It's getting a little tired. Eight straight hours this went on, even with the two police officers there. All he has to do is real, it's real simple. All he has to do is shut down the garage door, go in the house if they want to party. But they do this all the time. And all the Elk Grove Police do is go over and tell them, the neighbor is complaining about you. So, uh, and then they leave and they just keep doing the same thing. It's just ongoing. It's just getting tired.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind reaching out to me separately, I'll try to set up a meeting to see what we can do.
Yeah, like I said, I emailed you twice in 2023.
For this?
Same tenant.
Oh, in '23. Well, for this one, if you can reengage with me tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what we can do, but I will certainly sit down with you and see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, let's see. Next up is Steve Lee.
Good evening, Council. You know, I know you guys hate to see me up here, and I hate to come up here. I really do. I dread coming up here because usually I've got a complaint. And I haven't been here since you guys gave yourselves that 310% increase, salary increase. I'm here to talk to that. Back in December, you guys each gave yourselves a 310% increase on your pay scale. As a taxpayer, I find it vehemently appalling that you guys gave yourself that kind of a salary increase. You five who volunteered as part-time position to oversee this city and its tax dollars thought it was prudent and well-deserved to raise your civil service pay over 300% for a part-time job. Our current national leader is looking for ways to slash jobs and funding for every department in the national government. If he was aware of the ridiculous pay increase that you have allotted yourself and he had jurisdiction, you'd all be fired. Perhaps you should be fired. A 300% raise is totally unjustified under the most favorable of circumstances. You should all be ashamed of yourselves and embarrassed to accept it. And I've got a minute forty left, so let's just think about that for a second, okay? 300%. Dry cleaning? 300% increase? You know, it's, it's crazy. We've got people that are homeless we could be dealing with. We could, that money could be put toward, our tax dollars could be put toward better use than paying you folks who work part-time, show up here two nights, uh, two nights a month. I know you do other work outside of being here, and I appreciate that. But a 300% increase is just crazy, my friends. And I wish we had a full house, because I don't think most of the people in this town know about that. But think about it, a 300% increase, each one of you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Leroy Adams.
You know, some of you might know me. My name is Leroy Adams. I'm the great grandson of John Adams and John Quincy Adams, seven, eight generations. I'm also now the American Legion Area Chaplain. I need to help with the city and the county to do, uh, the land in the city and the county to do, like they do in Hawaii, do leasehold agreements to build business parks so veterans could do business here with the National Veteran Chamber of Commerce. Also, I'm honored to come from the city of North Charleston, South Carolina. My grandson is training now with Tim Scott. I talked with his Legislative Director about the empowerment zones and how we could get more money for the region to bring more businesses and more veterans here. Some of y'all might know my LinkedIn's on LinkedIn in Construction, about 23,000 veterans in America, in which 1,800 are women-owned businesses. So I'd like them to come, be a part of that stuff, and make a difference to our community. Thank you. Plus, I'm the American Legion Area One Chaplain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. If someone from our staff can connect with him on the chamber issue, that would be great. Mr. Dunn will connect with you. Thank you. Or Tish. Okay. Excellent. That is our final speaker for public comment, so we will move on to our next item, which is our City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Bearman, your City Manager. Just a few items to report on this evening. First of all, just a reminder, the city is inviting residents to help honor the legacy of local veterans and emergency responders by submitting a nomination for Elk Grove's Veteran and Public Safety Street Naming Program. Nominations are accepted year-round, but we are currently promoting the program to repopulate the list for future development. Program criteria and application details are available on the city's website. Shelves at the animal shelters' pet food pantry are getting low. This program supports local pet owners in need. Anyone interested in donating unopened, non-prescription dry pet food can drop off donations during the shelter hours, which is 12 to 6:00 daily, and we're closed on Monday. The Recycling and Waste Division is hosting a free compost giveaway event for Elk Grove residents this Saturday, March 1st, from 11:00 to 2:00. Just need to bring your shovel and any container, show up at the, at the SWAC, and fill up as much as you need. And then finally, this is the last week to submit a nomination for the 2025 Stars of Service Volunteer Awards. Help us to recognize extraordinary residents with this annual award, review the award categories, and submit your nomination online before this Friday, February 28th. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that Councilmen have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your report. Any questions, comments from colleagues? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is our Consent Calendar Items. At this time, I will open up the Public Comment opportunity. We do have two people signed up to speak on Item 7.16. We will start with Steve Lee, followed by Kathy Lee.
Madam Mayor, that was 7.16? Is that what you said?
That's what it said.
Okay, that's fine. I read here 17.6. I know that, I knew that was wrong when I wrote it. Related to Item 7.16, I don't believe that it belongs on the consent calendar. It demands council discussion as it potentially affects four districts, four distinct neighborhoods, all in Mr. Brewer's district. Both the developer and the city thought it prudent to reach out to the neighborhoods for a public discussion of this proposal. Unfortunately, at the outset of the public meeting, staff informed us all the matter had already been decided. Nothing we had to say really mattered. Don't get me wrong, I'm pleased the city reached out to notify the citizen taxpayers. It was absolutely the right thing to do. However, having the issue decided before the meeting was effectively a slap in the face to those who took the time away from their families to attend the meeting. There's engineering documents dating back as far as 1993 that state the Bond Road trunk line needs improvement. The only thing that's changed here are the latest findings, which are erroneous at best. If you look at Page 2 of the staff report, and I ask you to please do that if you have it, if you have it in front of you, at the last paragraph states the October 2021 storm equated to a 500-year event, but the Bond Road stormwater didn't reach the level expected of a 100-year event. Why is that? Because all of that water, mud, and debris flowed into Quail Ranch Estates. That's why. The mayor witnessed this a day later, after much of the water had already subsided, and it was just left with the mud and the gunk. Cleanup took over for over two weeks. And Elliott, uh, the Elliott people who are here tonight were gracious in their cleanup and asked what we needed, and were there for anything we needed to have it done and done properly without complaining a bit, and I'm very appreciative of that. Tonight, I put the city on public notice that our neighborhoods flood when we have heavy rains, whether it's getting more unpredictable and more severe. We're prepared to sue the city when our properties flood. Perhaps the city would be willing to purchase flood insurance for those of us homeowners affected if we're so sure of their new findings and their document. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Kathy Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about consent item 7.16, the Bond Road Upsizing Project that has been on the CIP since 2013. We are being asked, you are being asked tonight to cancel that upsizing project and subsequently ignore the continued flooding events that occur on Bond Road near the Quail Ranch Estates and the Fallbrook Communities. Staff now says that a reevaluation of the technical data shows that the upsizing is no longer necessary, and provided a litany of technical documents and mapping scenarios that apparently show that the upsizing would result in very little improvement to the flooding that occurs along, during prolonged rain events. We strongly disagree with their findings and come to you tonight with multiple documents that actually say otherwise. The city has made a lot of assumptions in their new report. This fact was brought to the staff's attention during the neighborhood meeting, and the staff did agree that some assumptions were made due to lack of monitoring equipment at the site. So I have with me tonight several documents that definitively state that the Bond Road Upsizing Project is a necessary component for the overall safety of our neighborhood. First, I have the 1993 EIR done by Sacramento for the Elk Ridge Estates, which is now Elliott Springs. That EIR says that the project drainage needs to be addressed, and the improvements of Bond Road drainage must be, uh, must be looked at. Then I have the 2007 EIR report done for the Silverado Project, which is now Elliott. And both the staff and YOST associates who completed the hydrology report of the EIR stated, quote, "The Bond Road drainage system has deficiencies that require mitigation. Impacts to Bond Road trunk pump lines are potentially significant," end of quote. The solution was to upsize the Bond Road trunk line to reduce the potential impacts to the existing drainage pattern to less than significant. Then there's the Wood Rogers Report from June of 2012 that says, quote, "The city's stormwater master drain plan has identified the existing trunk line on Bond Road to be deficient and to receive any more acreage from the Silverado Project. Draining more into that line will exacerbate the current flooding conditions on Bond Road," end of quote. Then there's the Technical Memo from Mark Tubick of Yoston Waste from July of '14 that says, quote, "The study, our study, has determined that the runoff from the 12 acres of Silverado could be accommodated in the Bond Road trunk pump line only if the proposed pipe sizes are incrementally increased." So now the staff wants us all to believe that all these people going back 25 years are wrong and this new report is right? You've been put on notice that this pipeline poses a, quote, "A potentially significant effect, if not upsize," and you're going to ignore that information so that you can claw away $5 million to put use somewhere else? We want to be on the record. We disagree over this consent item. If our homes sustained damage to water incursion, we will sue.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the Public Comment opportunity. Does Mr. Warner want to respond to anything that we heard, or Mr. Bearman, or even my council colleagues who were present, I believe, at the neighborhood meeting? If you want to provide any additional comments?
I mean, I can, I can respond. I think, you know, we did present information at the meeting. In no form or fashion did we say that the situation was decided. That decision is happening now, as to whether or not the project, we move forward with the project. The Technical Memorandum that was developed does include assumptions, as does the Storm Drain Master Plan. Those are very high-level assumptions that are now, that have now been refined with this updated analysis that shows that the Bond Road Storm Drain System meets our current performance criteria for existing systems. So that's the updated memo. I think it speaks for itself technically, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So just for discussion's sake, for my own clarification, what protections do we have if the assumptions are wrong? What, when, what, what happens next?
Well, the, and no property damage has been predicted in the Storm Drain Master Plan or in the current models that have been developed. And the current models were developed based on that 500-year event that occurred a couple of years ago. And, and based on the in-situation performance of the system, we decided to update that model. The streets, several streets within the City of Elk Grove are intended to convey the 100-year storm, so you will see some street flooding that occurs from time to time during storm events. And again, we're not, we're not predicting any property damage. None of the models predict property damage. None of the homes are within the 100-year floodplain that would require or warrant flood insurance. So those are, those are really the projections we have in place. The other thing that gives us a lot of confidence now is that we have much better maintenance practices in place than we had in the past, certainly when the initial models were developed. And you may have seen historical flooding in the neighborhoods previously. That may have been the result of poor maintenance practice or clogged gutters, et cetera. We have much better equipment, much better technology, a lot of monitoring equipment in our creeks and channels, and we have proactive storm response plans in place in the event of a major storm event where we'll be reactive. We work with police and fire partners, as well as our operations and maintenance teams to make sure that our streets, primarily our drainage system, is clear and ready to go for these storms.
Excellent. Very thorough response. Thank you. I appreciate that. Did you want to add anything?
Well, I would like to add just, just a personal thing. When, when we left the workshop the other day, I thought, I thought this was, this was all resolved. I, and I don't say this as a challenge, I say this as, as friends, I wish you would have given me a call and let me know you still had issues with it, because I certainly, I certainly would have asked them to pull it off of consent calendar. So I, I'm going to support it tonight, because just same as I, as I mentioned to you the other night. But I, I certainly understand why you're here and why you're registering your complaint for the future. I get it. But just know that I, I just checked. I didn't see any emails. I would have had, okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. So, did you have a, go ahead, Councilmember?
Jeff, I just wanted to get, if you could explain a little bit more on whether this, this was an issue of the runoff that you're saying is, is less now? I understand the capacity in the streets, but if I read this right, you, you're saying the, whatever was modeled before was to a 500-year frequency event, but you're seeing different, a different runoff now that's less? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
No, we're not, we're not predicting less runoff. We, we think the system's more efficient than was, than it was when it was originally modeled. So the, the rain event that occurred produced a creek level in Laguna Creek that was below what was predicted in the original model, right? So based on that, we then extrapolated and did some further analysis to show, that ended up revealing and showing that the Bond, the points in Bond Road that were predicted to flood in the 100-year event and the 10-year event were actually predicted to now perform pursuant to the city's performance criteria. So there will be some ponding and puddling, but it won't rise to the level that it was predicted in the original Storm Drain Master Plan.
Because the original Storm Drain Master Plan, the assumptions based on that model were based on areas and things that...
Correct.
Yeah.
Very high-level analysis, and this is based on a more refined analysis, as well as in-situation performance of the system. So we took the actual data from, that occurred during the storm event, and applied that to the model, and updated the assumptions based on that. We also updated some soil condition assumptions as well.
Okay.
And that's all, and that's all disclosed in the, in the memo.
Yeah, yeah. And, and did, uh, back then, did it, it's just because it was more of a rural area, that they, they did more high-level modeling in this master plan?
No, that's, that's consistent with storm drain, storm, the master plans at that level, where you would do, you wouldn't do the refined, the level of refined analysis that we would do on a project. In fact, the Storm Drain Master Plan that, that's adopted today, that was adopted in 2012, we're currently in the process of updating that. Both versions of that document will say, say, and will say that more refined analysis is required in order to confirm the modeling assumptions and predictions.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one, one more thing.
Sure.
If you could clarify for me, clarify for me, please, Jeff, if we, assuming that this item passes and we don't fund that, the funding would then be used specifically where?
So I can't tell you exactly where, but I can tell you that it's only allowed to be used for drainage purposes. So this, this fund, five, the funds that are on this project are 95% our drainage fund. We have several aging pieces of infrastructure that we're going to have to maintain in the future. There are several other projects identified in the Storm Drain Master Plan, and we're in the process of updating it. And that update will include better technology than we had when, when the original one was developed, so we hope that the results are even better as far as predicting what, what projects we need to move forward with.
Right. So when we remove this drainage project, that money will only be used for other drainage projects in Elk Grove?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Brewer?
And on top of that, they'll be used for existing projects, correct?
They can be used for existing projects identified by the current Storm Drain Master Plan, or what we're expecting would be the projects that are identified by the Storm Drain Master Plan update, or when we, when we have a 10-year cycle of inspection for all of our storm drain pipes, that's possible through the new equipment and technology that we have that's been approved by the City Council that we've purchased. So when we go out and we do our maintenance inspections, which as a newer city and a growing city, and an aging city now, we're, you know, coming up on our 25th anniversary, these, this infrastructure needs to be inspected and maintained frequently. We've had some corrugated metal pipe fail recently ahead of schedule, so we're a little bit concerned about that. There's a lot of corrugated metal pipe that was installed pre-incorporation, when we were still the county. We, up until now, haven't really had a good inspection program to where we know the status of that, or the condition of that equipment, or that, those pipelines. So if we come, you know, if we come across a damaged pipeline, we get tree root intrusion, we're going to need to correct that and replace those systems. And those systems are the systems that are there today to convey the storm drain away and prevent flooding throughout the city. So we definitely need to maintain that before we start thinking about new projects.
I want to thank you for providing us with those, with that information, because a lot of technology has changed.
They can be used for existing projects identified by the current storm drain master plan, or what we're expecting would be the projects that are identified by the storm drain master plan update, or when we have a 10-year cycle of inspection for all of our storm drain pipes, that's possible through the new equipment and technology that we have that's been approved by the city council that we've purchased. So when we go out and we do our maintenance inspections, which as a newer city and a growing city and an aging city now, we're, you know, coming up on our 25th anniversary, this infrastructure needs to be inspected and maintained frequently. We've had some corrugated metal pipe fail recently ahead of schedule, so we're a little bit concerned about that. There's a lot of corrugated metal pipe that was installed pre-incorporation when we were still the county. We, up until now, haven't really had a good inspection program to where we know the status of that or the condition of that equipment or those pipelines. So if we come, you know, if we come across a damaged pipeline, we get tree root intrusion, we're going to need to correct that and replace those systems. And those systems are the systems that are there today to convey the storm drain away and prevent flooding throughout the city. So we definitely need to maintain that before we start thinking about new projects.
I want to thank you for providing us with that information because a lot of technology has changed since the initial master plan. And the diligence that you and your staff, Mr. Warner, along with the rest of our city's staff that have put into educating the public on this has been invaluable. Even so, we have the home builders being present, being available, and meeting with the public, providing their insight on it. It's been very helpful, especially knowing that the property itself, before any of the development took place, had vernal pools, flat pasture land. So any of the flooding that did take place in those major rain events, major storm events, they were very telling. Ever since the development has been put in place, I would personally drive down Bond Road every morning, every evening, and I would drive inside the Elliott Springs neighborhood to check out not only the basin, but also the health of that basin and how White House Creek is, for me, has been a concern. But at the same time, seeing at the work that everyone's been doing and the education that has been put into it has been very helpful. And I think as we move forward, this will help in terms of looking at the overall fiscal health of the fund for the project, but also looking at the health of Quell Ranch Estates and going forward because that was a very real issue. We definitely heard, we definitely engaged, and I feel confident that the action that we would take in adopting this resolution will help.
Okay.
One more go back, please. Because what's, a lot of folks may not know this or recognize this, that this Silverado project is a long-histrified project under different names and different... It's a long, long thing. And so what I first want to recognize and memorialize is that it couldn't have been done without the assistance of the residents who lived nearby. It couldn't have been done without the patience and their willingness to cooperate. It couldn't have been done without Elliott Homes, right? They'd been very patient in us getting this resolved. I know that in other, you know, there was the really bad storm event that happened, and that was neither the developers nor the residents' responsibility, but the subcontractor who was responsible got out there, cleaned it up, did what they had to do, right? But I can't leave it... Also, I want to recognize what you had also brought up, Mr. Lee, relative to your working relationship, or your, not working relationship, but your partnership with Elliott Homes and making sure that that eastern boundary of your homes and all of your neighbors was adequately addressed, too. And so I don't know that this will be the prologue to, or the end to this long story. I hope that the final story is that everybody's happy, and I expect that they will. But I just wanted to thank not just the Lees, but for many other residents who have worked through this. Sometimes there was, you know, loggerheads, and sometimes it was pleasant, but I want to thank you very much for that. I want to thank Elliott Homes for this. And with that, I'm ready to support.
All right. Thank you. We are now at the, unless there's any other questions, I will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
That'll take us to Section 8, our public hearings. And item 8.1 is actually two public hearings, and they're in relation to annexations that involve the Elk Grove Sports Center retail pad.
I am here tonight. My name is Cindy Tiffany. I'm a finance budget analyst. I'm here to present annexations to special task districts. The city maintains eight special task districts within the city, and annexations are, properties are annexed into appropriate districts, and they're typically part of the original planning process. The requirements are specified for each individual project, and they're typically according to geographic location and/or building use, and the annual rates are adjusted annually. The project today is the Elk Grove Sports Center Retail Pad, and they will be annexed into CFD 2006-1 and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2. This is the 101st annexation for the CFD 2006-1 and the 71st annexation for the Stormwater Drainage Fee. The project is, there's a map. It is located off of Laguna Boulevard, and it's a 19,680-foot, square-foot, commercial building on the northwest corner of the 20.8-acre parcel. It's a commercial parcel. Like I said before, the annexations will be for CFD 2006-1, which is the Maintenance Services District, and the Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak to this, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 101 is now closed. And let's see, look for motion A1. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. May I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
And expect things to go a little bit different tonight. So we will have some kind of truncated actions, and you'll see as the process goes through. But for this item of 21 possible votes, 21 opposition votes were cast protesting the special tax at the rate of portion described. So the measure fails to attain the necessary 2/3 threshold of all votes cast in the election. But we do have a resolution that declares the result of this election, and it's available for council consideration.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So we still go through motion A2.
Motion A2. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you.
And with that action, Mayor and Council, just wanted to say that based on those written protests against the proposed annexation of the territory of the existing community facilities district, there's no further proceedings to annex the territory under that action. But we still do have our second public hearing, so please continue.
Excellent. I will now declare the public hearing for SWGF Annex 71 now open and open up public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWGF Annex 71 is now closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, we do have, this time, a majority protest of 21 possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property. 21 opposition votes were returned. So based on the written protests against the proposed annexation of territory to the existing assessment district, there are no further proceedings to annex the territory. And that would conclude this item.
All right. Very good.
Madam, just before we move on, could I just make a note on these? So we read these all the time to the public, and they're probably like, what are they doing? Well, the bottom line is, the reason why we have the best-maintained roads in the region and the city looks so beautiful is because we require development projects that want to proceed ahead to annex into here and self-assess that give us the funds to take care of the property, the surrounding area, and the city. So that's why we do this. Without that requirement, we would be struggling to maintain roads and medians and a lot of things that other cities that didn't have this tool or didn't employ this tool, you know, 50, 100 years ago, you know, older cities, they have these legacy issues. So that's what this all means essentially. And I know we don't have a project tonight, but I thought since the opportunity came up...
Very, thank you for the lesson. Educational because not everyone knows, so...
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Onto our next item, which is 9.1.
That's going to be to receive the fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget report and consider a resolution that would amend the fiscal year 2425 budget and the CIP and subsequent actions that staff will detail.
Good evening, Mayor St. Allen, Vice Mayor Robles, and members of the council. Nathan Bagwell, I have the privilege of serving as your budget manager, and I am presenting tonight for you the mid-year budget review and check-in for the fiscal year 2425. Before I get started, I want to acknowledge my super team. It's consisted of Cecilia Long and Matt Ruiz, as well as those sitting up here with us this evening and our management team throughout the city. This is truly a collaborative effort. We have a $374 million budget that we monitor throughout the year, and we bring it together as a family, and we're very proud of this product. So thank you to all of you as well. That's what we're going to be discussing tonight, is the general fund revenues expenditures. We will touch on Measure E, a couple major non-general fund updates. We'll discuss recommended amendments, as well as proposed changes to the position control and salary schedule for the city. And then we will conclude with the staff recommendation. So we'll jump right into general fund revenues. Revenue sources listed here, each represent their own nature of business. They are largely trending close with their adopted budgets. So what we're going to focus on here is the projected variances at year-end, and that's what you can see there in the mid-year adjustment column. Bottom line, the story here is that mid-year general fund revenues are currently tracking pretty close to our budget that we adopted. It's about, and we are projecting about a 3.3% revision. This is $321,000 out of the $104 million that we're anticipating to come in below our adopted budget. What this consists of is a projected reduction to sales tax, which we will get into in just a moment. We are experiencing some economic headwinds. We'll provide some context on that, as well as offsetting increases to property taxes and investment income. So what does that mean? Sales tax accounts for about 37% of the city's general fund income. Inflation, higher costs in general, they are affecting our local economy. Specifically, we're seeing folks, we're seeing data that supports, folks are staying in their cars longer, waiting for interest rates to come down. It's also unknown how the economy will react to the new administration in DC. Tariffs and geopolitics will all be factoring in. We do work closely with our sales tax consultants that informed this most recent forecast, and we will continue to monitor this very closely. With regards to property taxes, we found out after we adopted the budget from the county that we were going to get this additional revenue. So it being unknown, we go ahead and build it into our forecast. Investment income, we are expecting at least a $1.35 million increase. And what this is, it's the return on the city's investments. So when rates are higher for borrowers, conversely, they're actually higher for city government and the type of investments that we utilize. These are generally treated as one-time funds. An example of some of the variance that we've been seeing, the local agency investment fund, it's a module that a lot of local governments use for their investments. In 2022, quarter 2, 0.75%. Two years later, at the same time, 4.62%. So scale that up to significant dollars, and you see how we are... Overall, the city's portfolio continues to perform very well. So we're going to now shift over to expenditures. The bottom line is that thus far, the city has expensed about $40 million of our roughly $93 million budget. The year-to-date activity column is where I'm going to turn your attention to next. As you can see there, we are anticipating about $1.2 million of savings that we've experienced thus far throughout the year. What makes this up is about half a million dollars in salary savings and about $700,000 in benefit savings, largely driven by vacancies throughout this point in the year. So if you then combine the $321,000 expected reduction in income with $1.2 million reduced spending, we're looking at about $880,000 of expected surplus at the mid-year point. So now we're going to take a look at Measure E. Revenues, we're staying in the course of what we're seeing, what we've been largely close to budget. Regarding expenditures, about $5.3 million have been expended to date. It's important to note that there are some, there are a lot of new programs that the city is standing up, and there's some big chunks of that that have timing components. Specifically, there's a $2 million grant line business park infrastructure program. There's $3.5 million for addressing homelessness. The city has worked to line up contractors for the interim homeless shelter and transitional housing. These two initiatives I just mentioned are anticipated to begin drawing down their Measure E funding as the year progresses. There's also a little over $5 million in the Public Works Department for pavement management and traffic. Those tend to pick up as the weather improves throughout later in the year, so we expect that to continue progressing steadily. There are two requests for additional funding through Measure E. These are relative to homeless encampment cleanup efforts, as well as purchasing a traffic light grid smart system. That's a real-time computer vision product, and this is for the intersection of Bond and Beta Road. These projected increases are, however, offset by a $100,000 reduction in capital outlay. That's a project that's simply changing funding sources, and we will discuss that project further when we address the proposed CIP amendment. Briefly, we're going to touch on major non-general funds. The roadway program fees are trending significantly higher than budgeted projections. The main driver of this is residential development fee collections have been coming in higher than anticipated. Staff is recommending we increase this revenue estimate by $1.5 million. And for the major capital facility fees, the revenues at mid-year are generally trending above, and for certain cases, they've actually exceeded already the revenues at mid-year. And again, the story here is that construction activity remains very strong here in Elk Grove. For all these funds, spending activity typically trends low the first half of the year. Construction season starts later in the year, and the large capital projects often spend multiple fiscal years. With that, we will go ahead and turn our discussion to budget amendments. As mentioned earlier, we are looking to decrease general fund revenues by about $321,000 and reducing expenditures anticipated by $1.2 million. We talked about Measure E, reducing expenditures in net of $33,000 and increasing revenue for the roadway fee fund by about $1 million and a half. Next, we're going to get into some proposed public works budget amendments. So for gas tax, there is a proposed net $130,000 change. This is a combination of $60,000 increase to revenues, $190,000 to expenditures. What this is, it's demand-driven sidewalk repair work. So we do get paid for this work, but this is us being responsive. We've had more demand within the fiscal year than we anticipated, so this is how we're trying to get out in front of the second half of the year. In the Maintenance Services Community Facilities District, there is 135, I say services districts. This is relative to the citywide maintenance services in Laguna Ridge. There's $135,000 fair share of the city settlement related to landscaping costs. And just for District 56, that's CFD 2005-1 for Laguna Ridge, there is a proposed $75,000 for a UV system replacement for the fountain there. Also, there is a $45,000 purchase proposed for the streetlight maintenance district. This is for solar streetlights at Elk Grove Boulevard and Grantline Road. Continue on with public works. There is one CIP proposed amendment. This is the project we discussed earlier relative to Measure E. This is just a change in funding. This project is replacing the existing Police Department Monument sign. This is the sign that's in honor of Officer Ty Lenihan, a member of our law enforcement family that we tragically lost in January of '22. We are replacing that with a new sign. Staff determined that the city's general fund capital reserve would actually be a more appropriate funding source for this project. For recycling and waste, there is a request for $218,000. That is work relative to SB 1383 compliance. We originally anticipated funding this with grant funds. We found out later that the grant funds were not eligible for this use. However, we do want to still continue with this work as this is a local, multi-agency effort, and we want to fulfill our obligation for that. Facilities and fleet, there's a request for $858,000. This is for 14 replacement vehicles and one new. There's also a request for $125,000 in expenditures. This is to bring on a consultant to manage the city's fleet while the city restructures the fleet and facilities division. A position request for a new maintenance supervisor for fleet position will be discussed as further, as part of the position control discussion. And to round out the budget amendment discussion, there are two further requests, one from housing. This is for $102,000 in the Neighborhood Stabilization Fund. What this is for is the Adams Townway Project. That is a project that is a conversion of a city-owned property into permanent shared housing. City intends to use this particular funding source because it is restricted, and it may only be used for very specific purposes, and this project has been deemed a suitable use for those funds. And lastly, insurance. There is a proposed adjustment of $1.7 million in revenues, $1.9 million in expenditures. This is relative to settlements the city has experienced thus far in the fiscal year, for which we expect to recover most of it by the end of the fiscal year by way of insurance reimbursements. We'll then move into position control. The table before you shows staff's recommended changes to the current fiscal year, starting with public works. with public works. Staff conducted an evaluation of the recently vacated Fleet and Facilities Manager position. As service demands for the city continued to expand, staff has determined that two actions would provide the city with greater efficiency in the delivery of services, one of which is to reclassify the Fleet and Facilities Manager to an Operations Manager. This will come with expanded duties, including urban forestry, open space management, as well as coordination of contracted work with the CSD. The facilities fleet manager and the operations manager salaries are proposed to be the same, so there's no net impact. There is a new position proposed. This is a dedicated fleet supervisor. Their job is to solely focus on the oversight and coordination of central fleet services for the city. The new proposed fleet supervisor position is estimated to cost approximately $159,000 annually. Staff also evaluated a recently vacated Senior Administrative Assistant position, determined the position would better suit the city's needs as a customer service representative in the Operations Division of Public Works. The reclassification is a downgrade of a current position with a net annual savings of $27,000. It's important to note that these movements I just discussed are non-general fund positions. Continuing with position control, three additional reclassifications are proposed, one each from Finance, Information Technology and the Police Departments respectively. Finance is recommending a downward reclassification of the Purchasing Manager position to a Coordinator position. This is based on changes to the scope and complexity of the position. Information Technology is looking to reclass a Senior Information Tech Analyst to a Network Engineer, the intent being to better support the city's physical and virtual network and telecommunications infrastructure. Lastly, the police are reclassing one of their Community Service Officer positions to a Public Community and, pardon, Communications and Community Engagement Specialist, with the intent to support and assist the department's Public Information Officer to provide more specialized and consistent support for public relations. The Finance and Police Department positions are in the general fund, and there is a net savings of $55,000 annually projected. Rounding out the position control discussion are two recommended funding amendments, the opioid and the Wilton Rancheria Fund. Both of these positions in these different funds were filled at a higher step than was anticipated for the fiscal year. The Youth Services Unit, there is increased overtime cost, so we are also looking to amend that budget. And with regards to Wilton Rancheria, there's also been increased overtime activity as this relates to theft deterrent. Lastly, the proposed salaries for the newly created positions, including reclassifications, are displayed here and incorporated as part of the updated salary schedule that accompanies the staff report for this item as Exhibit C. Brings us then to the recommendation. Staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution, amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget and 25 to 29 capital improvement program, authorize changing to the position control listing, adopting an updated citywide salary and step schedule, and approving and ratifying city council health and welfare benefits. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your thorough presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up. I'll close public comment opportunity. And questions, comments, I'll start to the left. Anything?
No, no comments. Thank you, Mr. Bagwell. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, any questions, comment?
Thank you so much for your in-depth, super knowledgeable, and appreciate it. So, thanks.
Councilmember Brewer, anything?
No, I, I, I definitely think, thank you for providing us this walkthrough, especially when you look at the expenditures, how we're using Measure E, and the, the public works projects that are, that are in play. I'm definitely pleased with, with YC, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Spies, any questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. I mean, the, in terms of sales tax revenues, I mean, we, we don't always know what the future is, right? Or we don't know what the future is, right? But I appreciate that you're, that you're looking forward with that and making sure that we're acting responsibly and spending responsibly in it. We don't know what the future holds, right? So, I appreciate, you know, rainy day funds, and I appreciate that we're doing all of the right, all of the right things. So, thank you very much, Mr. Bagwell. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Before you adopt the resolution, the resolution was inadvertently left out of the, the packet, so we're going to ask Nathan to pull it up. It's been added to the folder that's there. We'll pull it up, you'll be able to see it on your screens, and we'll be able to adopt it from there. There it is.
Very good.
Thank you, Jason. All right, who'd adopt the resolution?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next up, 9.2.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Darryl Doan, your Economic Development Director. And it's my pleasure to be here today to present an update on all of our economic development activities in the form of this annual report. This is our team. I'm your Economic Development Director, but more importantly, I have two bright shining lights in our industry, which we have been very lucky to find and bring on board in the last couple of years, Ms. Sarah Rodriguez and Ms. Tashana Manscott. And they are just a, can't say enough, a fabulous, wonderful addition to the city and to the work that we do in economic development. And there's a fourth position there that we are close to filling, so very excited about that as well. We should have interviews starting in about two weeks, so soon we will be four, back up to full strength. We haven't been full strength in quite a while, so that will be nice. So, that is our team. This is our budget. We have a budget of about $4.3 million, divided up as you see it there. These are our mission, vision and values for our department. So, you've heard me say this, we believe that strong economies make strong communities. And our mission and our values and our vision and our goals reflect that. I won't read all of this, but I will highlight our vision, and that is very simply, an innovative, inclusive and resilient economy. And our values are important to us, and we model them every day. We are ethical, we are inclusive, we are transparent, and we are innovative. And everything we do is built on those principles, and everything we do feeds into that vision of making sure that we have an innovative, inclusive and a resilient economy. I wanted to show this slide. I know you all saw this at the, at your city council retreat, but I think it's important for our residents to see it as well. So, every two years, we survey our residents, something called the National Community Survey. And this is, these are the results for how our residents feel about our economy. So, we see some very positive trends there. All of those yellow lines are the most recent results. We still have some work to do in visitation, according to our residents, and we are working on that, and also in vibrancy, but those are all strategic focus areas, as I'll show you in a minute. But I think what this shows is that by and large, our residents are satisfied with the state of our economy and feel like we are moving in the right direction. Rest assured, we will not rest on our laurels, however. These are our strategic focus areas for the Economic Development Department. Business retention, expansion and attraction is first and foremost, in that order, I might add. You've heard me say that, if we are not retaining businesses, we cannot make progress by attracting businesses. We do property acquisition and development, certainly business support of all sizes, shapes and types. We're focused on an innovation economy, a newly focused arts and creative economy, a visitor economy. We do a lot of work in partnerships and leadership to make sure that the city of Elk Grove is providing regional and statewide leadership in economic development. And of course, marketing and communications is certainly part of our strategic focus. These are our services that we provide to businesses. We tailor our services to each particular business need, as and when we know of a business that, that has a need. We do site selection, we help businesses find space in our city. We occasionally do incentives in order to land or retain businesses. We do a lot of work, a steady line of business in small business navigating, right? So, that's the small business who has a problem, who calls us, we solve their problem, or put them in touch with the people who can. We're in the workforce development space, which we talked about at the last city council meeting, and we are also in the permit expediting space. So, these are our business services. Our programs roll up into those services. So, we provide, we have tailored business incentives in a number of different programs. We have a state and federal office incentive program, the only one of its kind in the state of California, that has landed us one major state headquarters, and hopefully more in the future. We have Startup Elk Grove, which is our innovation economy. We have something called the Permit Assistance Smart Start Program, great program that provides up to $10,000 to any business wanting to set up shop in Elk Grove. Generally speaking, it is free to a business to go through our city's permit and entitlement processes. I don't know of any other city in the state of California that does that. And of course, you know about our Brewery Restaurant and Winery Program and our facade improvement program. You know about our Workforce Readiness Certification Program, or WORK. And we have a, we have a really strong impact fee to enroll program that we use occasionally to attract and retain businesses. So, what have we been up to in the last year or so? Well, there's too much to tell you about. I would need an hour, and I'm not going to take an hour. We're going to take much less than that, but we, what we've done is we've pulled out a few highlights for you. We've spent the last two years doing workforce development, which is something new that we've never done. We've never done it in this way, right? So, we, we ran programs that provided fully paid, fully paid workforce training for our residents in technology and manufacturing, and that went well. But at the last meeting, you worked with us to transition that to more of an on-demand business services program. But I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't point out that, you know, through those programs, we affected about 190 of our residents, and, and a number of them found meaningful upskilling and, and employment out of that. And I think in the future, when we're doing it on demand, it's going to be even better. We'll be even more tailored and even more targeted to the needs of our residents with this, with this new paradigm that, that you adopted a couple of weeks ago. We've adopted some great new programs. We, we've always had a really strong set of programs, but with brew and fixed and also an event grant attraction program, I think we're stronger than ever. We hit a major milestone with my favorite program, which is PASS, the one I just told you about, that makes it free to set up shop in Elk Grove. We hit $100,000 in grants given out, and the average grant size is about $2,500. So, that's quite a few businesses that we have helped. And we are rapid, I mean, it took us a couple of years to hit that deadline or that milestone, and we are rapidly approaching the $200,000 milestone. So, hopefully, we'll be in one of your districts soon, popping the cork and celebrating with, with all the council members when we hit that. We expanded, and this, this took a while, this was about a year-long project, but, but at the, at the request of our hotels, we expanded our tourism marketing district. So, we increased the assessment, the guest pay on stays in Elk Grove from 3% to 4%. We added three years, so that now sunsets in 2030 rather than 2027, so I don't have to, I don't have to take nine months doing that again. And we expanded our boundaries, boundaries to capture newly annexed territory. So, that was a big lift. Just last week, we announced the retention of all data. This was huge. It's not frankly getting enough attention, as, as retention typically does not get the same attention that attraction gets. But this is a legacy Elk Grove tech company. It's, it's the original, it's, it's the OG of tech startups in the Sacramento region, and they've been here since 1986. They were at risk of leaving, and we worked hard. I was on the phone with the broker and, and the business literally weekly, making sure they were feeling the love from Elk Grove, offering them what we needed to offer them to get them to stay here. It didn't come down to incentives. It came, it came down to, I think, that work that our staff did to make them feel loved and wanted, and it came down to them really enjoying their time in Elk Grove and not wanting to leave. So, we kept them here, they signed a 15-year lease, we, we saved 350 jobs and we kept 70,000 square feet of space occupied. Railroad Street, that, I'm proud to say that project is complete. That took a long time, you guys know that, right? We bought the first building back in 2018. This has been a city council, council priority project for a long time. This was a multi-departmental effort, particularly our partners were our good friends in Public Works, who built infrastructure, roads, parking, a plaza. We were able to facilitate redevelopment of two historic buildings as two great restaurant concepts, one recently closed but is being replaced. All of these improvements will be here for decades. So, we're very proud of that project, getting that done. I want to talk about retail momentum. You've probably noticed over the last, this, this is a two-year annual report, so let's talk about the last two years. We have seen a major improvement and increase in the pace and quality of retail in Elk Grove, right? Businesses like Amazon Fresh, Nordstrom Rack, Macy's, Thule Cafe, Club Studio that you guys, a few of you were at on Saturday, great new restaurant concepts. So, we are having our retail moment. The momentum is strong, we are hitting our stride, we have more coming, we have REI, we have Whole Foods, we have Yard House, we have Mendocino Farms, we have great retailers coming. There was a time when, when we weren't thought of as a sort of elevated retail destination, but now, after, you know, a number of years of telling our story, we are. Talk about our visitor economy for a minute. This is a big line of business for us. Council had the foresight back in 2014 to establish a tourism marketing district, essentially a, a P-Bid for tourism. I think people thought it was a little premature at that time, but it has paid dividends, and I'm glad we have it now, because it is working. We have great partners in Explore Elk Grove. At the time council created the, the T-Bid, you also created Explore Elk Grove, entered into a contract with them for them to administer that for us. We administer that contract for you. Sarah sits on the board and is our, is our board member, is doing a great job. Our ADR is some of the highest in the region, that's average daily revenue. Our RevPAR, which is Revenue per Available Room, is, both of those are the highest in the region. Our hotel occupancy hovers around 80%. Those visitors spend heavily when they are in town. We now have data on that from some data platforms we use, using TransUnion Data, we know that, that they've spent, that last year, they spent approximately $386 million. That's just visitors, that's not residents. Their average spend is about $183, so these are great numbers. Last year, in the last two years, we welcomed 62,470 athletes, meeting attendees and families to town, and they spent 14 and a half million dollars and supported about 6,300 jobs. So, visitor economy is, is one of the, the pillars of our economy, and we're going to keep pushing that. Marketing and communications, so hopefully you've noticed, in the last two years, we have greatly increased our storytelling and our marketing and our communication. So, we run two major campaigns. One is shop support local, so that encourages our residents to shop local. And we also run the Main Street Campaign, which is both Historic Main Street, it's Elk Grove Boulevard Corridor in East Elk Grove from 99 to Waterman. And I'm hoping that next year, we'll be talking about some additional neighborhood business district marketing. Both of those programs are generating sales, they are pushing our residents into businesses, they are attracting visitors. We have the numbers, they're on the screen, to show you that those are working, and we will, with your approval, we'll continue to fund those efforts. Business-wise is our somewhat low-tech approach to getting our message out, but it's, it's email. The great thing about email is you don't have to go find it, it shows up in your inbox. So, when we have something, a story to tell about something great our business is doing or something great we are doing, we blast that out over to 5,000 highly engaged followers. We're not interested in 20,000 followers who don't open our stuff, 5,000 engaged followers. In the last two years, we've told 55 different stories through business-wise, and we've greatly increased our socials activity. We've added 2,000 followers to LinkedIn. We've really pushed out reels and things like that on Instagram that are making a lot of impressions. This is all part of how we tell our story, and we do it in a very organic, owned and earned way. We try not to buy it unless we have to. More marketing and communications, swag, right? So, when we're out and about, we're handing out hats, we're handing out stickers, we're handing out bags, we're handing out, we've got it all, and that helps grow our brand. When we come back from a, a conference that's full of developers, we send them a gift package. When we come back from a conference that's full of site selectors, we send them a gift package, and we put information in there so they know that we're here to work with them. That is, that is really working. We're getting emails all the time from developers, brokers and site selectors thanking us for that stuff and wanting to build information or build relationships with us. We're tabling all over the region and all over the state everywhere we can, every opportunity we have to tell our story at the table. We're sponsoring events, both regionally and statewide, and we're hosting events that we're very proud of. You know about Pitch Elk Grove and how great that has been, so we're doubling down on events in the coming year. In April, we're going to have a brokers mixer, we're inviting over 800 commercial real estate brokers from Northern California to come and enjoy an afternoon of drinks and food and listen briefly to our value proposition and then get them back to enjoying themselves. So, they have a good experience in Elk Grove, and will want to do business here and will want to put us at the top of their list when they're working with clients. We have startup happy hours coming up that we're hosting in partnership with Startup Sacramento to better engage technology companies. We have an event coming up celebrating Small Business Week. Elk Grove will host the opening reception for the Capital Region Small Business Week this year. And of course, we will have our third, fourth, third, third annual, fourth annual, one of those. of those two Pitch Elk Grove event in the fall. We are doing more right now in the 10 years that I've been here than we have ever done, right, in the Economic Development Department. I'm very proud of that. But as I said, we're not going to rest on our laurels, and we're not going to let complacency set in. We have a number of very important upcoming projects that we're excited about and energized about that I'm going to tell you about. First is the Arts and Creative Economy Strategy. So we just seeded a new Arts and Creative Economy Commission, and we're going to work in partnership with that commission to create an Arts and Creative Economy Strategy that will be an actionable strategic plan that seeks to tie together arts, culture, and entrepreneurship in our city. Of course, Project Elevate. Sometimes these things take longer than we want, but we are staying, of course, on Project Elevate, and we are getting close to having a design and a transaction that we can bring to City Council for consideration. I hope to have that in front of you in the next one to two months. Business engagement. We've really doubled down on engaging directly with our businesses so that we understand what their needs are and how we can better help them. We are working on something called Business License 2.0, which will take our current business license process and streamline it so that we can gather better data and we can make the process of applying for a business license more user-friendly. And what that does is it gives us, it gives us a registry that we can rely on of who's in business, what they're doing, how many people they employ, how much space they occupy, so we can then tailor our programs and services to their needs. Along those lines, we currently have, the first time we've done this, the National Business Survey, so similar to the National Community Survey. That is open currently, and responses are robust. We're asking our businesses to tell us about themselves and what they need and what they do, so again, that we could better tailor our programs and services to their needs. And then for some time, and we're going to continue to do this and even do it more, but we're really doubling down on business owner and employee demographics so that we understand the racial makeup of our business owners and employees, the gender makeup, age, all of those important factors, so that we can identify maybe areas of weakness along demographic lines or even geographic lines, that then we can go to those places and to those people and focus our efforts using a more of a DEI lens. Automall next, this is what I'm excited about. It too has been a little bit delayed just because we haven't had the resources or staffing to really tackle it, but in the next couple of months, you will see an RFP go out. We are working in partnership with the Automall Association to re-envision what the future of our autumall looks like. You heard Nathan tell you that our auto sales tax is about 30% of our general funds. So we can't afford to let that autumall get long in the tooth. We can't afford to let that autumall not respond to consumer preferences and demand, and so we're going to come up with, again, a very highly actionable strategic plan that will set in motion a series of improvements and changes to the autumall that will make that just a much better customer and employee experience, which will in turn drive more sales, in turn drive more revenue to the city. I told you about our Broker's Open House, but I'm going to tell you again. Really excited about this. 800 brokers invited, April 24th. You're all going to be invited, the entire executive team. We hope you will be there. It's the first time we've done something like this, so we're excited about it. And then another thing I'm excited about is we're working on a Made in Elk Grove Program. So this is a new incentive program that we are modeling after Startup Elk Grove, which will help launching and scaling instead of tech, Main Street companies, launch and scale. But we're looking for companies, we're looking to support companies that have uniquely Elk Grove offerings. If Speeds B's were still in business, that would be a uniquely Elk Grove offering that we would be looking to support, so if that helps you think about the kinds of things we're looking at. But makers, crafters, things of that nature, so we can not only spur entrepreneurship, but then we start to develop this brand as a city that makes things. So those are some of our upcoming projects, and this is our pipeline report, so you probably want to know what the numbers are over the last two years. Well, interestingly, our business license-- so we look at three things. We look at our business license momentum, changes in that. We look at a plan to development, and then we look at openings. So our business license momentum is kind of all over the map, right? On the renewal side, we're not 100% sure why that is, and we're going to look into that and try to figure that out. Our new licenses polled has definitely flattened. You can see it's been doing that since 2018, probably before that. I think what's going on there is that our, you know, we have limited space, and we don't see a lot of spec development, right? And so you're not going to see these massive upward trends until we get some new space built. We'll know more about what these graphs are trying to tell us once we implement Business License 2.0 and build a better, more accurate, more comprehensive business registry. Plan development, so this is our pipeline. We track a pipeline over 5,000 square feet. So our current pipeline has 29 different projects in it, and that has the potential for the development of 4 million additional square feet of commercial space in Elk Grove, which would support approximately 10,200 jobs. So we have a fairly robust pipeline that our friends in community development are working through, and we're also working through that where we need to step in and assist. And then business openings. So we don't-- a lot of economic development agencies take credit for jobs and investment at the time that the company commits to being here, whether they actually open or not. We don't do that. That's intentional, because until a business is open, we're not getting the benefits of that. So that's how we do that. Again, these are projects over 5,000 square feet, so these, for Elk Grove, these are considered larger projects. But in the last two years, we have had 30 new business openings over 5,000 square feet. That totals about 665,000 square feet of space occupied or constructed. That equates to a $49 million investment, and those openings are supporting just around 1,000 jobs. So in closing, I just want to thank the council for your support now and over the years. I want to thank all of my colleagues. Economic development doesn't happen just in our department. Everybody touches it. And again, I want to thank my team, and I want to let you know that we are, we're here, we're energized, we're looking forward to the next year, and we hope to be back here in 12 months telling you about all our great results. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment opportunity and open it up for comments, questions. I'll start to the right this time. Councilmember Space.
Okay. Thank you. So I appreciate your report, Mr. Dome. Just one, well, two comments. One, there's a lot of fantastic things going on, and I appreciate you giving us this update. And one of the things that I'm most happy to see is, you know, focus on not just retention of businesses are here, but the opportunity for residents to grow or to start and grow a business here. But one of the, the second thing is a little bit, I guess it's probably in the retention area, something that you didn't mention, but I have had an opportunity to talk with a number of folks, is a thanks for helping out a couple of small businesses that have had some landlord challenges relative to, you know, keeping the buildings maintained. The reality is, if we didn't intervene, if your office and legal and, I'm sorry, code enforcement and probably others that I don't know had not intervened, it would have been very different for them. It's caused disruption, of course, right? But that's not on us. But I appreciate that you are helping them to find, in some instances, a new location, in other places, a temporary location, and to work and get some of the building issues resolved. So I think that helps people who are here and who have a small business and are trying to, you know, grow and sustain or sustain and grow. It shows great support to them, and so I want to thank you. I appreciate that.
Your bet.
Councilmember Brewer?
Very appreciative of the update, Mr. Dome. This brings me back to the Vision 2020 Elk Grove workshop that took place back in 2016. And I remember participating in that and engaging in that.
I've still got that on my shelf.
And I love, and I love the commercials so much that they took one part out. I didn't know why. If you recall, I was in there on two occasions.
Boy, that was before I got here.
And some people are like, yeah, no.
That must have been 2015 or 2014.
That CSD guy doesn't need to be on there two times, so we need to edit that commercial.
We won't do that to you.
But I appreciate it because that workshop, all day, and that was when, I believe you were part, you were already on the city at the time.
2016, yeah, I was. About a year.
And everything that was taken in those workshops has been brought to life in some way, shape, or form, and it's really cool to see because now we're in 2025, we're seeing the fruits of that work, and we're seeing that businesses are opening, sections are coming to life. It's all because of the vision that the folks in the room, but particularly the vision that you had in having the civic engagement and transforming Elk Grove and making it the city that it is today. I want to thank you for that because--
Thank you.
That was, that was a large undertaking, and to see it all come together is amazing.
You're giving me too much credit.
No.
I will say thank you on behalf of the entire city organization.
But it's praise that needs to be given because, because I saw, I saw, I saw what you were envisioning. I saw what the City Council at the time was envisioning, and it's remarkable to see that consistency and to see that buildup. But looking at how permits have flattened, and yeah, we are having new businesses here, and we have some concepts that are cooking and that are moving and moving in the right direction, would it help as a recalibration to do a Vision 2030? Or has things progressed in a way to where we have programs in place that would not necessitate a large brainstorming session like that to help Elk Grove move to Elk Grove 3.0, that next level?
No, I, I'm always, I think it would help. I do have confidence in our programs and services and our staff if we didn't do that, right, that we're still going to be doing all the things that need to be done. But I think it's always a good idea for our businesses and our residents and the institutions that support our economy come together and spend some time talking about what we want to see. It was the, the Chamber of Commerce has historically been sort of the convener of that, but there's no reason that your Office of Economic Development couldn't convene such a strategy. So let us get back to you on that. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, because you have, you have, you have an awesome team, and then you have Explore Elk Grove that is now on the fold. And then you're going to have the Arts and Creative Economy Commission that is going to be a part of that as well. And it helps in a way, helps build that momentum in creating such a workshop to where everything that you are envisioning and what you're, and what you're seeing and what your team is seeing of how Elk Grove can be transformed even more, especially now with the market coming online, Project Elevate a little bit coming on in the very near future, near immediate future. Sky River Casino, at the time, we didn't see that coming, and it came, and it's been such a catalyst for the city that everything that is being built over there with our partnership with them definitely sets the table for this next stage. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, get your perspective, get your thoughts, because you're the, you're the subject matter expert when it comes to economic development and just wanting to see exactly what the potential is in turning that other corner.
Sure. We will, we will take a look at that and put it on our follow-up list and be glad to come back and talk to the council about what that would look like.
But like, again, I want to thank you because your, because your leadership and your, and your focus and attention to detail is what brings the city to where it is today.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. Darryl, great job on the presentation. I was joking with some earlier tonight because of years ago, a presentation that went, that went long, but it was a joke because--
So you're the culprit.
I am. Well, I'm one culprit for sure. But you know, the, but in all honesty--
For the record, Mr. Lindgren, I think, has the longest presentation in the 10 years I've been here.
I do remember that one, too.
His Civic's 101.
That's true. That's true.
Possibly him on the zoo, and also Chief Davis gave a very long annual report, but I am more than happy to shorten things up.
Well, my, but my point was, you, there is a whole lot, a whole lot that you have done over the last 10 years, a lot of good things, and you were bragging about all those things, and so it wasn't, it wasn't just, and so, but, and rightfully so. There was, and Councilmember Brewer, you know, talked about it, you've, you've steered the ship, I think, in a very good way. When, before I came on council, any of us looking in the audience, there were, and economic development is a tough industry in general, right? It's kind of, it's more of a, I feel like it's more of an art than a science, you know? And so there were your predecessors, and people were always in the community. We always talking about how, you know, how to get that going, and I do feel like you were the first one to actually get things going. And, you know, whether it was timing or not, it definitely was, was you, in my opinion. So all these things that, that started and are flourishing from the first-day permits to the brew, and now it's brew before it was just breweries, you know, and the restaurants. I continue to brag about the Old Town property investment because I think that is a great example of a public-private partnership, and it's a, it's a huge success story for this city. I don't, I don't know if people, you know, just appreciate all the work that you were trying to do at the time, trying to form a P-Bid, trying to get Old Town people, Old Town folks to reinvest in their businesses, and no traction there, and doing what we did, really, the dividends you see are paying off. And so I like, I also like, you know, building upon these earlier programs, this new one Made in Elk Grove, the Startup Elk Grove was a, was a great one, and that is, has continued to gain traction. And so things are maturing and things are, I think, progressing in a good, good direction. As you mentioned in this presentation, there's a whole lot of, of programs that you're starting and managing, and so I get it where the bandwidth might get difficult, so luckily you're getting a person on board. So all that's to say is, when you go, where we're going next and the things that you're talking about, I'm really anxious to see the outcome of the survey, to see where we can focus our energies on that workforce development. I think that's a, that's a very good goal. Kind of similar to our council retreat, or we're not similar, but we talked about this at the council retreat, a way to, to work on that education component, so we get an educated workforce that can help with a targeted industry like tech or whatever we choose, whatever survey you come back with, the results of the survey that you come back with. But as we all know, Apple, right, is a, you know, it's here. I know they, they got their donut, and they probably, you know, don't want to invest engineers, but doesn't mean we keep, we don't try, and, and part of that, I do believe, is that education. Is there, you know, any, what are your thoughts on that specifically? And then the other thought I have, this is kind of, this is separate, than the statewide economic development, I don't know if you call it the association, I know you're part of it. I'm curious what you're seeing at the state level with other cities in Southern California and Bay Area, what they are doing that you think we can do, if there's anything, or maybe some of these are giving you, maybe those things are giving you the ideas that you're talking about now.
Yeah, they, they are to a degree. I mean, we're, we like to think we're good at original thought, too, and some of this is that, but I mean, I mean, you have to have a robust set of programs and services, and you have to have incentives, right? And so we've always been blessed financially to be able to have incentives, even if we don't use them that much. There are some cities that are doing some great things in education. I mean, you know, first and foremost, I'd love to get some, some higher, more higher education here, something you and I have talked about for years, and believe me, we, we have tried, and we're still trying, and I think there's still some opportunity to do that, right? So if we, those are really hard things to pry out of other places and really hard things to start from scratch, so that's kind of an uphill battle. But we are, that is still something that's very much on my radar, right? If we could find our, you know, our SAC State Engineering Center, our, you know, move their MPA program here, you know, put a building here. We've had robust conversations with SAC State over the years to do that, and at times it looked like we were going to do something, and then, and, you know, now they're, now they're putting it down by the Capitol, right, and the rail yards and things like that. But there are other schools, I think, that we could, we could target as far as attraction candidates. You know, we're blessed to have CRC here, and what I love about, and we have a great relationship with them, and Dr. Edward Bush, and, you know, Tashana sits on their, the Chamber's DEI-- the Chamber's D E I Task Force, which is chaired by Dr. Bush. He's really committed to economic development. I think we could probably double down on that relationship because what's great about Community College, and I am a proud product, I'm a Sacramento City College Panther, very proud that I went that route, is probably the only reason I'm standing here, you know?
There's a bunch of us.
Yeah. I really like.
I read A R C and Sacramento City.
I really like Community College because it's virtually free, and they are the state's workforce development partner, right? So when we have a company who comes in and says, you know, I need 100 welders in, in two months, we're going to CRC to ask them to plug our residents into their welding program. So bullish on Community College, bullish on education. It's, it's definitely a regional play. Talent is a regional play, doesn't care about political boundaries. But I think if we had, if we, you know, we, we have, and if we had more higher, higher education institutions here, I think that would be great. We've built really strong, we are building really strong partnerships with our Elk Grove Unified School District, particularly Sarah and a lot of the work she is doing, because she was running our workforce programs, and we're starting to open some doors there, I think, because they have a fantastic pathways program that I, I think we could do more with high school students graduating, and if they're not university-bound, they should be Los Rios Community College-bound, and if they're not that college-bound, they should be getting trained in a trade or a skill and working for our company. So more to come on education, but I think there's a lot we could do. And as far as other cities that I'm looking at, there, I mean, there are great cities up and down California. We're always, we're always looking, you know, I, I'd rather not create a program from scratch, I'd rather copy somebody else, you know? There's, there's some cities doing some great things, and we're very plugged into CalEd and Team California. I'm on the board of Team California, I've been on the board of CalEd, we've got our partners in Greater Sacramento, so yeah, we're always looking for, when we see something we like, we bring that back and we see if it can fit here, and that's where a number of our programs have come from. So appreciate your comments, Darren.
Yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, super substance, a lot of stuff that we're doing. When I go out in the region, everyone says Elk Grove is the place to go to. All the chefs, all the restaurant owners, they're like, just waiting for the right time, and everyone's starting to say Elk Grove is, is so undervalued. So thank you for what you're doing, thank you for the team, Sarah and Tish for, for doing the amazing work, and I'm excited to see that, you know, you're bringing 800 brokers together. That way, they can start seeing.
We invited 800.
Well, hopefully, we can get 800.
We have 800, we're going to be in the parking lot.
Yes, but hopefully.
Occupancy's 150. We intend to fill it up.
Still excited to see that, because most of the brokers will just probably still think of Elk Grove as being a bedroom community. And, and we're not, right? We, we're, we're already, we're just hitting our strides right now, and we're continuing to go. So might want to slow down on the 3.0, just because we're, we're just hitting it right now, and maybe after we get a couple.
We could do both.
Things down after that. But I'm excited to see what, what's going on in the city, and just thank you for, for your hard work.
You bet.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. I'm a big champion and proponent of economic development and love the work that you're doing, but really credit also goes, of course, to your dynamic staff. I've enjoyed working with you over the last several years, and just compelling, you know, you've got just a dynamic staff, so looking forward to that fourth, the fourth position to round out the, the, the team. There's a lot of incredible work that has taken place and then also what's coming, so very excited about all of that. Looking forward to seeing the expansion of the workforce development. I think that's going to be excellent. Railroad Street, I mean, what a game changer. It's now a destination place, and that's what dreaming big looks like. That's what would, you know, in Visit California, when you're creating these destination places that become economic drivers. That is exciting to see all of the, the excitement there and the investment. The retail momentum, not only the current, but the future, I mean, I'm just thinking in the last 60 days, how many grand openings that I've gone to. It's quite, quite incredible and just continues to play along with, you know, meeting the needs of our residents, long-awaited, that, things that we've been waiting for. I've lived here for over 30 years, and I, you know, I'm so glad that I obviously still live here because all the things that I had hoped for way back in the day, we're now getting to enjoy, so that's really wonderful. Our partnership with Explore Elk Grove, they do phenomenal work, and I think that also is key to continuing what we're doing. The car, the Arts and Creative Economy, I am really looking forward to see how we are going to incorporate the commission with economic development and see that next level of what economic development and truly the Arts Commission can and will be. So that's going to, that's a huge and exciting opportunity for the city of Elk Grove, so I'm very excited about that. The marketing that I've been seeing is wonderful, so I know that it takes a, a team to put that together, just the communications and marketing pieces are excellent. Looking forward to your project Elevate coming up. I, I know that that's very important for, for not only this council, but for the community. I get lots of questions of what's coming, when's it coming, and, you know, the excitement is definitely building. Love the made-in Elk Grove concept. I think that's going to be really cool. You know, one of the hashtags I always use is Elk Grove Proud, because I am proud of our city and all the things that we do. So this, you know, reinforces that sort of pride that we have in our city, and then made-in Elk Grove, I think, just is that next lends itself very well to that. And just all of the exciting business openings, so great work. Congratulations to your team. Excellent job, and I look forward to continued success from everybody. Excellent presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will go on to item 10, which is council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start with councilmember Spies. Anything?
Uh, yes, just one quick thing. One quick thing. So I chair the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission. We recently did a grants process, and there were some grants applications that were reviewed by Ms. Alicia Tutte. And the executive director of the SAC Metro Cable Television Commission asked me to be certain that I thank Ms. Tutte, and I figured that this would be a, a good time to do so. They really appreciated her participation, and she offered to help in the grant process modification for the future, because this was our first time doing it, and it was, apparently it was less than efficient. So who would have known, government, right? But Alicia had some great ideas for that, and she's, apparently she's willing to help next year, and so I want to make sure that I thank, thank her for that. So that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
So, so tomorrow, Sacramento Public Library Joint Powers Authority, we're going to have our meeting tomorrow at the county administrative offices in their chambers, and they're, and it's open to the public, and we'll be on Cable Access TV, so hopefully everybody will tune in. It, it'll be a quick meeting, but it's always a, a good meeting, especially when we engage with the friends of the Sacramento Library.
Thank you. Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a SAC City meeting today, very short, nothing to report. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, anything to report?
Air Quality Board meeting tomorrow. Looking forward to that.
All right. I had SAC RT and STA over the last couple of weeks, and that's it. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:39 PM. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.